The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I am Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hans, along with my co-host, Tony Palmieri. On this edition, we're going to be chatting with four candidates running for the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education, two of them in the first half hour and the other two in the second half. Joining me right now are two of the three incumbents seeking reelection. To my left is Dan Becker. He is seeking, now refresh my memory here, Dan, is this your second term that you're seeking?
Correct.
Okay. So you're seeking reelection for the first time, basically, going for your second, three-year term. And Amy, same with you.
Yes.
You won three years ago and you're seeking reelection as well. Congratulations to both of you for making it through the primary. As we tape this, the primary was a week ago. You know, any surprises with the way the election turned out in February for either of you?
Well, Cheryl, I certainly would, in all deference to Mrs. Weinheim, I certainly would have liked to finish better than third, but certainly a third will get you through to the general election and that's all we can work on at this point, is moving on from there.
What about you, Amy? Any thoughts?
I wasn't surprised. It didn't, it kind of fell out a little bit like I thought it might. Places notwithstanding, the folks that I thought would make it through the general election did.
Okay, good. Well, you're both, you know, incumbents, as I said, so why don't we talk a little bit for just a few minutes about what you've accomplished during your first term on the school board? Of course, the term, as I said, is three years, which is different from county board or city council. So you've been at this for three years. What have you learned and what have you accomplished? Amy, why don't you go first?
Wow. I've learned a lot. It would take too long to go over what I've learned. Accomplishments, I think that I've chaired the Policy and Governance Committee for the last two years and I love that work. We are a group that is supposed to set policy and we're supposed to review policy and we're supposed to implement policy and I've learned a lot in that position and I think that we've done some good work. We're currently working on the wellness policy, which I've had a hand in. That's a passion, a personal passion to me as well. On a broader scale, the restructuring efforts and in particular, the middle school initiatives, I rank as high priorities and I have been a supporter and feel that that's a big accomplishment in our district.
Good. And we'll talk about some of those. Dan, what about, what about you?
Well, I think one of the things I'm most proud of, Cheryl, is the fact that I've been able to identify substantial savings within the school district shortly after I took, took office three years ago. With the help of some other board members, but at the same time was the spearhead of the issue, we were able to identify a $2.5 million savings in health insurance benefits here in the district. Now unfortunately for the taxpayers, that wasn't realized, but still proud of it nonetheless. And I think there's still some savings out there to be had and should I be returned to the Board of Education, I fully intend to pursue that matter further.
Okay.
Now you two have, I think, a very different perception of the way this district spends money. I want to read a quote by Amy that's been floating around the websites and then get Dan to comment on it and then Amy, you can give more. Amy was quoted as saying, "It astounds me that the public keeps choosing to portray Oshkosh as a willful, frivolous spending district because we clearly are not when you look at what other school districts do with their money. We've worked within our state restriction for the last three years. We have not, we have not countered to what constantly gets bantered about taxed to the max." You disagree with that statement, Dan, don't you?
I do.
Okay. What, on what grounds do you disagree with the statement?
Well, when you compare yourself to other districts, you're assuming that they're actually doing a good job as well.
Mm-hmm.
That's the error in that logic. If you compare yourself to someone who's not doing a good job, you're going to look like a star.
Everyone's spending too much money?
I would argue that there's a lot of districts out there that are spending too much money. The vast majority of the districts in this state, Tony, are covered by the WEA trust, which I argue, and I think successfully to most folks, is they charge too much for health insurance. There's no competitive forces in place on WEA trust. I said it before, we found $2.5 million in savings in health insurance by going to a local company with competitive forces in play.
But would you say, Dan, that we are a willful, frivolous spending district?
I think we, we don't pay enough attention to where we do spend our money. I wouldn't go so far as to say frivolous, but there are some economies out there that we can garner without too much angst.
All right. You're giving that, you know, you're giving us the healthcare savings example, but do you have another example?
Well, for instance, and it's not a huge sum of money, but maybe unbeknownst to most of the viewers out there, we send our athletic coaches down to the basketball tournament in Madison every year at the district's expense.
All right. All right. Let's stop there for a second. Amy, what about the healthcare savings? He has said this numerous times, why didn't the board vote for these healthcare savings?
Because we can't arbitrarily change health insurance. Health insurance is a mandatory point of bargaining and unless you have an agreement, a settled agreement, a signed agreement and buy-in from those union groups to do so, you have to exactly match what they currently have to arbitrarily change the insurance.
Do you think that our bargaining team should do a better job of bargaining for these savings?
I think that all of the bargaining teams and all of the units have worked towards containing health insurance every year and have managed to get concessions. Concessions to the tune of $2.5 million, no. But again, they're represented by unions and that's a reality that we have to deal with.
All right. What about Dan's comment that your comment here is comparing us to other districts that may not be doing it right?
Some do it right, some don't do it right. I don't, I don't think that's a qualifier in regards to my comment. I do not believe that our district taxes their constituents to the max. Clearly, it's borne out by the amount of money we've taxed. We haven't hit revenue caps for the last two budget cycles. And I just simply...
Hold on a second. What about that, Dan? She's right.
She is absolutely right and I'm proud of that.
All right. So how can you say we're an overtaxed district?
Or even taxed to the max.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily say we're overtaxing, Tony. What I do say is we could spend our money more wisely. We could return a lot of money that we put on the tax levy to the kids. Right now, we're spending money unnecessarily. We're in this for the kids and I know that's cliche, but the kids are the ones we're here to serve. Let's get the kids what they deserve.
You don't think that we're spending any money unnecessarily? You think that every dollar in that budget has been accounted for properly?
No, that would be naive. I don't think anybody can give a budget that every dollar is accounted for perfect, in a perfect sense.
All right. So where in your judgment are we spending money unnecessarily?
Unnecessarily?
Where do you think there can be some cuts made? If you want the question phrased that way. He's giving us some examples.
Well...
You've told us why the healthcare savings are difficult, right? Your other example was of the, having the coach travel.
Coaches, I mean, there's a multitude of them.
What about something like that?
And certainly if we want to limit folks from being involved in extracurriculars, we can definitely look at that. I don't know that that's unnecessary spending.
Okay.
But it's spending that doesn't translate into enhanced education. And so I would be willing to look at those types of things, absolutely.
All right. Cheryl?
With respect to the insurance and the bargaining, I mean, I think we all understand that there are laws in place that say, you know, you have to give them something of equal value if you're going to take something away. Not being on the negotiating team and not having that kind of insight, you know, do people who are on that team, Amy or Dan, whichever one wants to answer it, or both of you, do they have enough guts to say to the unions, "Look, you know the situation the state has put us in. You know the predicament that we're up against. It's either you make some concessions here or we're going to have to be laying some people off and cutting some teaching positions or administrative positions or whatever." You know, has anyone ever just said that to them?
Actually, I'll take that if you don't mind, Cheryl, at least first.
Sure.
I actually, when I came up with this idea and we found out that we could save that money, I went to a negotiation session. I'm not a member of the team, realize, but I went to a negotiation session and made that, virtually that same presentation to them. And that is, "We're in a bind here, folks. We need to find a solution, a creative solution, to solve some of these problems." And I thought, I brought forward what I thought was a creative solution to a problem that turned out so that everybody could come out ahead in the end. The school district could garner some savings. The teachers' union could actually see an increase in salary because in years past, they've actually taken pay cuts to maintain benefits. And I applaud them for that, but at the same time, I got to say, you can't take your health insurance to the grocery store. You can't take your health insurance and pay for your gas and electric bill. Let's try and get you folks some salary because I think in some cases you do deserve it. We can do that by being a little creative. But again, that didn't go anywhere real fast, unfortunately.
Amy, you're on the negotiating team, correct? Or no?
No. Neither one of us are on the OEA negotiating team. We serve on other negotiating teams.
Okay.
And I do thi, I don't, I can't speak for the folks on that team. I doubt that they've ever said, you know, we need to lay people off, but I know that certainly the negotiation team I'm on, for a different union, we have approached it in that manner, not laying people off, but saying, "Here are the realities of our budget and here are the realities of what you're asking for as well." You know, it's astronomical compared to what other units are getting. And as you know, we went to arbitration on the last go-around. So you can be forthright, but I don't know how far that actually moves you.
So if I'm hearing you correct, then basically we've got a union that is, is being rather stern, if you will, about, and stubborn about what they have and they are unwilling to make compromises. Is that a fair statement or am I overstating it?
I think that's the nature of most unions, period. And...
I think though that, you know, I was talking with, with the mayor of Nina and, you know, he went to their unions and just said, "Look, folks, you know, basically what I said, you know, this is the situation we're in." And they were able to work out compromises that both, you know, the city and the unions could live with. And I guess I'm just not sure why it doesn't work in some of these cases.
Well, the OEA negotiations are done a little differently and I, I am hopeful that we'll see some more strides with healthcare this year because they did make some strides in the last negotiation session. They have a mediator, they do consensus bargaining and you hope that they will continue to operate in a meaningful manner to garner some of those savings.
Sure.
And I think they are aware, everybody's aware of it.
And I'm sure it wasn't just, I'm sure it wasn't just Nina's mayor. I'm sure it was other people saying this too, but, okay, go ahead.
All right. Let's talk about boundaries for a minute or two here. You're both incumbents. I don't see that this board has done anything on the boundary issue other than talk. If you're both reelected, is anything going to happen on boundaries? Amy? You do agree something needs to happen?
Something should happen.
All right.
And we're not the only board that has not done anything about boundaries.
That's true, but, but why has nothing happened to this point? Is the, is the board just afraid to tick off parents? I mean, what's going on?
I think that prior board makeups were hindered by parent outcry.
Yeah?
And...
Well, this board is hindered by parent outcry, is what it's sounding like.
Well, we haven't approached it enough to even get the outcry happening.
Well, but it sounds like this board doesn't even want to suggest the parent outcry or even, or encourage it.
No, I think that...
Has this board engaged in a kind of conflict avoidance when it comes to boundary? Because why haven't we moved on it?
Quite simply, Tony, I think it's a matter of board members having the onions to do something about it, really. Something needs to be done. We've got a serious problem between our two high schools in this community.
Well, you haven't moved on it. You've been very clear on the calendar, you've been very clear on the health insurance savings. Where's Dan Becker on the boundaries? You know it has to be done.
The information's still coming forward at this point, Tony. We're waiting for information from the focus groups to see what the community's going to support and I'm promising, and I've done it before on this show, Tony, something's going to get...
Cheryl, how many years of information have we had on this?
A lot.
And I can't speak for prior boards.
Would you both pledge that if you are reelected, that within the first few months of your election, there will be movement on this, on boundaries?
I'd say through the first six months.
Within, within the first six months of reelection?
Yeah.
Okay.
There has to be for lots of different reasons, not just the high schools.
All right. The more difficult question is, what kind of boundary shift would you like to see? What do you want to see happen with boundaries?
Well, I would just like to see a better makeup of how we disperse our population so that we don't have some schools that have 100 kids if it's a similar physical size and another school that might have 300 or 500 kids.
Are you willing, let me phrase the question this way. Do you think it's time to sacrifice this neighborhood school concept? Because it seems like that's one of the barriers, right? People want neighborhood schools.
I don't think that neighborhood schools have to be completely abandoned to accommodate boundary shifts.
All right. What do you feel about that?
I, on this topic, have to agree with Mrs. Weinheim. I think neighborhood schools are an important piece at the elementary level especially, middle school to a lesser extent, and high schools. Those kids are mobile, they've got the ability to move themselves around town. But I think that's still something that we need to, to keep in mind.
See, in my, in my opinion, that's the hindrance. I like the neighborhood school concept, but it seems to me the more we latch on to that concept, it makes boundary shifts very, very difficult.
Can I add something up quickly?
Yes, please do.
I think that as opposed to looking at the neighborhood schools, what we need to maybe rethink is how we feed those schools into the larger middle school and high school. That might be, and that will still raise hairs on people's necks, but I think that is one way to approach it.
Okay. Cheryl?
Well, the calendar continues to be kind of a sticky widget here.
Very much so.
You know, do, do both of you support 17 early release days for collaborative purposes? You know, if not, what would you support instead and if so, you know, why?
I don't support 17 early release days. What I would support is a collaboration calendar, AKA school calendar, that does in fact still provide for collaboration, but outside the student contact day. And there have been some creative solutions proposed to that end. Again, unfortunately, met with some resistance from our teachers' union for a variety of reasons.
Sure.
Amy, what about you?
I don't have a personal problem with the 17 early release days. We've already talked about trying to knock some of those off with this next calendar, but still keeping a meaningful number of them. Some of the creative solutions that were proposed in making collaboration happen outside of the school day, I didn't feel were particularly viable, one of them being banking minutes per day. And the reason I did not like that idea was that we talk a lot about teachers having a specific work week and they only have to work a certain number of hours. And I think when you get into trying to say, "Well, if you leave five minutes early this day, we're going to keep you five minutes later the next day," you start creating teachers who will start watching that clock. And we have a lot of teachers who don't watch the clock, so I didn't want to get into that. I don't want to go down that road.
Right. Amy, why were you, as related to this, why were you unresponsive to the 600 signatures that came forward, asking the, this is a year ago, asking the board to reopen the negotiation of the calendar? It seemed like at least four members of the board had really, this is how it seemed. It seemed like you didn't really have any sympathy for those people.
If 600 people had come to the meeting, that would have spoken more than 10 people coming with 600 signatures and it, and it wasn't 600 signatures. And at the end of the day, we service, you know, 6,000 families, so it's not...
Oh, so you thought this was like a manufactured group?
No, I don't think it's manufactured. I just don't think that signatures alone should drive a decision.
Oh, so basically what you're saying then is that parents have to pack the chambers for the board to do something like reopen a negotiation? That would have done it for you?
It would have moved me much more than just a sheet of papers, yes.
All right. What's your view on that?
600 people spoke their mind, whether it was in the boardroom or signing their name to a piece of paper. I've gone out of my way to seek public input. That, that sounded volumes to me. That was like a marching band coming through that room.
But recently, Dan, there was a public meeting about the calendar, I believe, and I, I don't know how many people showed up, but it wasn't hundreds?
It wasn't. And, I mean, that might be a symptom of the community as a whole. People tend to be more reactive than they are proactive.
Yeah.
I certainly would have enjoyed to see more, you know...
But is it possible, Dan, that maybe people were not as upset about this as you believe that they were or are?
I think the more accurate statement, Tony, would be people have become complacent. They feel they've been beaten down. This is what we're stuck with now.
Like you can't fight a city hall?
Exactly.
You don't believe that?
Exactly. Because, because they've gotten the door slammed in their face on numerous occasions.
I would disagree with it only because I had been in other public forums for calendars and nobody came, so...
So you think, you don't think anyone in the community, or you don't think enough people in the community have a problem with this?
I, no, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Cheryl?
Well, the district at one time, and perhaps still does, feel that one of its top priorities should be the restructuring of grades six through 12 and the district's net risk program. Do you believe that that should still be one of the district's top priorities and if so, are you willing to redirect or reallocate monies in order to make that happen?
Ladies first.
I am a huge supporter of the restructuring efforts. I do think we need to continue to look at reallocating funds to make sure that we can move these initiatives forward. I believe in smaller learning communities, which is a big driving force behind both the middle school and high school restructuring.
Okay. Dan?
I too am a supporter of 612 restructuring, but I guess I'm a little confused, Mrs. Weinheim. You made a comment just a few days ago about it may be time to exceed the revenue caps to fund these sort of...
Nope. Sorry, that was not my, my comment.
You did not say that?
And I indeed wrote a letter to the editor about that.
Okay.
My comment was that we need to look beyond just revenue caps as our limitation. And I said this in context of talking to our business community. I sit on the Partners in Education Group and Partners in Education has been vocal about wanting to see high school restructuring happen and I would like to see our business community then come forth and help out with that. Not that we go to referendum. I never said anything about going to referendum.
I was just going to add that, you know, certainly I am in favor of 612 restructuring, but all at the same time, we do need to keep a close eye on the price tag that is associated with it.
Well, the figure that was thrown out was $1.1 million? And you were quoted in a report on the Oshkosh News site as saying, "Not for this price tag." You were talking about the 1.1 million? That's too much.
It's too much if we find no other way to pay for it. The only other option, since we are going to tax to the revenue ceiling under the next budget, would be to go to referendum or find things within the budget that we can cut. And of late, administration has come to us with what I would quantify or classify as cutting right to the bone, the VIP program, the Teenage Parent Program. We've got to find more economical ways, more, I should say, less painful ways to cut some dollars out of this budget.
You would be opposed going to referendum under any conditions?
Until such a time as we've gotten to all the fat in the budget. And I argue there's still some out there.
Can you imagine going to referendum for this?
I'm not, I am not adamantly opposed to ever looking to referendum.
Right.
And I don't think that we have $1.1 million of fat, so it's, it's, you're between a rock and a hard place.
Well, okay, you don't think we have $1.1 million of fat, you're not opposed to necessarily going to a referendum. That sounds like you probably do support going to referendum because you're passionate about restructuring.
I am. But I also...
So why not just say that in order to get to restructuring, we should go to referendum?
Well, because like I just said, I think there are some other places we can look to.
But not 1.1 million dollars? Not 1.1?
Not within our own budget, but we could approach some other folks about helping us get some of these initiatives moving.
Because to tell you the truth, I, I think the public would support a referendum if it was a rational restructuring project that made a lot of sense. So Cheryl?
This is kind of a small issue in comparison to everything else, but there certainly has been talk about these roofs that need to be repaired. And, and one of the, one of the things that is being bandied about on the different blog sites is, you know, this issue of warranties on the roofs. Can, can either of you or both of you address the roof warranty issue? And, because the question that people have been raising, and I think it's a valid one, is if these roofs or portions thereof have warranties on them, why would we not make the companies enforce and honor the warranties? And so I guess I'm bringing that question to you both.
The information that's been presented to the board, Cheryl, is it's just too damn hard to hold these people accountable for their warranties. We've been, been told it's a finger-pointing type scenario. Is it the materials provider? Is it the contractor that put the material down? That answer doesn't sit well with me. We're talking about a multimillion dollar budget item. We've got to do what we can to, you know, avail ourselves of the warranty on these issues. Now unfortunately, the board voted to move ahead with, with a new project to the tune of $2-plus million. So that, unfortunately, that cow's already out of the barn until next year.
What does the district's lawyer say about the warranties?
You know, I, I don't know, quite frankly, what, what he's had to say on that issue. It hasn't been made...
Well, doesn't that seem prudent that you would, you being the board, before approving, you know, additional hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever it will cost in total to do the roofs, that it wouldn't seem more prudent to just say, "Hey, look into this. Somebody has sold us a premium product with, you know, a warranty on it and someone by God is going to be held responsible for honoring this warranty."
I absolutely agree with you 100%. In fact, today, as board members, each one of us, I'm assuming Mrs. Weinheim got it as well, was a report from an independent roofing consultant that flat out told us we paid too much money for these upcoming roofs. That concerns me greatly. I think the taxpayers in this community are getting ripped off and quite frankly, I'm proud I voted not to support that roofing project.
Okay.
I want to ask a question about style. Dan, I think your campaign slogan has been something like, "Vote yes for Dan so he can vote no for you."
That is one of my, one of my tenets.
And I think a perception of you is that you are inclined to a no vote. You're, you're a watchdog of the administration.
Exactly. That's what...
Right? And Amy, I think with you, it's, there's a perception that maybe you're inclined to support the administration and not, not say no to them. Do you, Dan, see Amy as part of a group on the board that is too inclined to vote yes?
Well, there's definitely a, I mean, there's, there's a reason we come up with 5-2 votes more often than not.
All right. And do you believe that the naysayers on the board have just laid out unreasonable stands?
Sometimes. Sometimes not. Sometimes you vote your conviction and that's your conviction.
Mm-hmm. What's your overall feeling about the collegiality on the board? Does this board have good collegiality? When, when Mr. Becker says that Don Sween should not vote on the budget, for example, do you think that that's going too far?
I, I don't think we should get into trying to block people from voting.
You don't think so?
No.
Okay. Do you think that he should vote on the budget?
I think that unless there is absolutely a benefit tied to his vote, he has every right to vote on it. And he was able to vote on some of it because we had indeed settled different pieces of budget concerns regarding teachers, retired teachers.
And you disagree with that?
I do.
You don't think he should vote on any, any part of the budget?
Well, we, we did find a creative solution this time around to allow Don to vote in parts of the budget. And Mrs., what Mrs. Weinheim says is to a certain extent true. I mean, he certainly should be able to vote. He was duly elected to the Board of Education. He was duly elected to the Board of Education.
But you've been calling him something like a tool of WIAC.
Those weren't my words. I believe that was another board member.
It was. Okay. Okay. You didn't distance yourself from those words?
No, I didn't distance myself from them, but those are not my words.
But you don't think it's inappropriate for people to use language like that?
If that's the walk you're gonna walk, that's what you gotta expect.
Right. You think that's inappropriate? You think that's uncollegial?
I do.
Okay. All right. Cheryl?
Well, we are just about out of time, so why don't each of you take about 30 seconds, look into camera three there, and tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, April 4th.
Again, ladies first.
Well, I'm passionate about educating our students. I'm passionate about creating an environment that offers them the greatest opportunities available. And I think I have demonstrated that through my voting record and through my support of the various initiatives in our school district, and hope that you will remember me in the general election on April 4th.
I've always put the values of students, the benefit of students, first. If you're looking for someone that's gonna be a good custodian of your tax money, your tax dollar, vote for Dan Becker in the upcoming general election.
Okay. Well, that was faster than I expected. Dan, you left us with a few extra seconds here. So I will just, you know, take this moment to say congratulations again, and thank you both for being here. I know that campaign seasons are usually pretty hectic, so thanks again.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And Tony, thanks to you as always. And always, thanks to you as well at home for letting us into your homes for the last hour. We will be back, actually, I'm forgetting this here. We've got two more guests coming. I'm not used to this. All right, we're gonna take a short break. When we come back, we will be joined by Lee Wilson and Michelle Monte. So we'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, boarded.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would've been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write. Your dad? You speak German? Your dad?
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom. And that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
All right. Welcome back to the second half of ION Oshkosh. Cheryl Hans along with Tony Palmieri, and we're discussing school board issues and school district issues. We just finished chatting with Dan Becker and Amy Weinsheim, two of the three incumbents running for school board this time around. And we are now joined in this half by Lee Wilson to my left and Michelle Monte next to him. Both are seeking their first term ever on the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. Lee ran last year, and did you make it through the primary last year?
Oh, yes.
I don't recall. Okay, all right. And so, but you didn't make it in the general, and you're giving it another crack here. So to both of you, congratulations for making it through. Any surprises for either of you in last week's election? As we're taping this on March 2nd, it'll show later, but...
No, I didn't see any real surprises. I was a little bit surprised at the low turnout. I was hoping for a few more voters to get out and vote, but, you know, it's a primary...
Just a few more?
Just five more, 10 more.
Amy, what about you? Or Michelle, rather.
Geez. Okay, let's not go there. I was surprised, but, you know, I'm new to politics, so the fact that people voted for me at all is pretty much a shock. I, like Lee, I'd hoped for a larger turnout. I'm a little disappointed that the incumbents just kinda ran away with things, but, you know, you take it as it comes.
But that's pretty typical, though, I think. I mean, unless people are really just horribly upset. And Michelle, you think that people are upset in this district? I mean, at least you are.
I am. A lot of people that I talk to are upset about different things. It's not really any one topic. And, you know, I'm not sure if the voting went the way it did because of name recognition or because people genuinely think that the incumbents are doing a fabulous job. I, you know, I'm too new to this to really gauge anything.
Let me ask a question related to that. I wanna thank you two for running, because if I were an incumbent running for school board, the passion and the knowledge that you two bring to this race would concern me as an incumbent.
Thank you.
And I, as I, I know I speak for a lot of citizens in thanking you both for running. But having said that, what strategy are you gonna use between now and April 4th to overcome the incumbents? You both got through the primary, but the incumbents had a fairly sizable lead in the primary. So I'll start with you, Michelle. What are you, we're taping on March 2nd. What are you gonna do between March 2nd and April 4th to get the message out about your campaign?
Um, I, my preference in that, maybe to my detriment, is face-to-face communication. So I'm gonna be going to as many of the functions that I've been invited to as possible, getting out and talking to people. My strategy, and this is unheard of in politics, is to be honest. I know that's not happened too frequently. The other thing is to just listen. I really need to hear what people's opinions are. And, you know, I've been asked to talk, but I'd much rather hear what's going on. The other part of my strategy is to not be on the fence. I think we've heard that phrase all too often, is, "Oh, I'm on the fence about this," or "I'm on the fence about that." I've gotten a lot of information. I get a lot of feedback. I watch the websites. I read different journals. I've even gone to the state school board website, the WASPY website, National Teachers Union websites, because I'd like to find out their positions on things as well.
Absolutely.
And I'm just gonna go with that, is get the information and form an opinion.
Lee, what are you gonna do between now and April 4th?
Well, my strategy is real simple. I'm gonna draw a line of demarcation between incumbency and me. If you're happy with the school district it is now, maybe you should vote for the incumbents. But I've been watching the school board for five or six years now, and we haven't solved the freshman failure rate, we haven't improved the graduation rate, we haven't repaired the roofs, we haven't solved redistricting or facilities usage, and we go on and on and on. Communication still hasn't been solved yet. And if we keep voting for the incumbents, all I see is a lack of leadership that takes us to solution. We go from one fire to the next fire, to the next fire, and nothing ever gets solved. So I think it's all about leadership. I'm gonna show people that I'm a leader, that we'll get things done, we'll solve problems, and then we'll move on to the next thing.
All right, Cheryl.
Along with that, you know, some folks have said, Lee, because you are a businessman, that you will, you know, perhaps say one thing now, but take the businessman's approach then if you're elected. How would you respond to that?
I'd say, I think that's great. I'm all for education. I started running two years ago, just about, and my message was I wanted the best schools in the state of Wisconsin. I still do. Our children deserve great education. They really do. And in this competitive world, in the business environment in which I work, it's extremely competitive, and you better be well-prepared to get out there and work. So I think it's great that I'm in there pushing for great education, but with a businessman's approach to budgeting, expenses, efficiencies, justification of projects, well-defined projects, and accountability to the administration.
Let's see, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, kind of along those same lines now. Michelle, you've been very outspoken about a lot of things, and I think that's good. But by the same token, you've pointed out some things with certain board members that you're very much opposed to. And, you know, as we all know, sitting at this table, when you're one of seven, or one of 38, or whatever, however large the governing body is, you have to be able to work with people. When you've come out against people, how do you then, if you're elected, be able to build coalitions in order to gain consensus? Because you need four votes, at least. So how would you go about doing that if you're elected?
Well, I have spoken out, and I have named names at times, but there isn't any one board member I am against every single thing that they're for. It's always been a pick and choose. There are things I agree with Mrs. Bowen on, there are things I agree with Mr. Sween on, and there are things we don't. And they tend to be the more vocal, so they tend to be the targets. I think if I were able to present my position, as I have had with the general public, present my position, show them, you know, I did a little looking at some of these things that we were brought from the administration. We might want to consider a slightly different direction, or we might wanna take this plan a little bit more slowly to be sure we wanna spend millions of dollars. I think it's possible to build bridges. I don't think I've completely burned them. I think the perception is, though, that I am a little bit combative, and that's because I'm blunt, and I tell things like I see them. And if there's a name attached, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna talk to you, Cheryl. I'm not gonna talk to the seven other people. If it's something with you, I will talk to you.
Sure.
Well, one thing that drew you into school board issues, Michelle, one of many, is the calendar issue. And you were very clear that, in your judgment, there was a groundswell of public opposition to the 17 early release days. But yet, whenever there have been public meetings on the calendar, where is that groundswell of opposition?
Well, I, before the last meeting, I did a lot of phone calls, and the answers I got, well, some of the parents worked second shift. And, you know, when one parent works second shift, the other parent's home with the children. You know, not everybody can afford a mass babysitting service on one night. The other problem is, it's been a year since the calendar was changed to Wednesdays. In that year, there hasn't been an outreach from the board to attempt to communicate with the general public. And at this point, other than parents like me who are vocal and not afraid to stand up and say things, they're just sick of it. They're just tired of it. They know the board's not gonna change anything, so what's the point?
But if you get elected, you will change it. You will try to change it.
I will look for a better idea. I will, I would be willing to go to the teachers' union in the negotiations and present them with several different plans, and say, "Hey, I'm willing to come this far. How far are you willing to come? We need to do something that..."
Some kind of compromise.
The day of the week does not matter.
Okay.
It's the instructional time that's been cut needs to be put back. Something needs, the parents are willing to go along with the after-school collaboration time, if it were on a day of the week that was a little bit more flexible. Our largest employer, one of our largest employers is Oshkosh Truck. Do we really think Oshkosh Truck is gonna tell all of the parents that work for them, "Oh, sure, no problem. You can leave an hour early"? Even their union wouldn't support that.
Let's find out what Lee feels about the calendar.
Yeah, go ahead, Lee. And then I wanna come back to something.
Well, the calendar's a tough one, and I too would like to sit down with the unions and talk about early release Wednesdays, or whatever day it is. I think the real problem is that there's been a lack of honest attempt, in my opinion, on the part of the school district to communicate with the parents on the issue. There was a survey sent out, and it wasn't a survey. It was, "This is why Wednesday's good." And at the back, there was the four or five questions about, you know, "What do you think?" It just, let's have some open dialogue. Let's hear what parents have to say first.
That was, that was the thing I was gonna bring up when Michelle had said that there'd been no communication. They did send this thing out, and I know that there was some flack about it, because people didn't feel that it was a questionnaire that was really trying to seek out their opinions. And wasn't it worded something like, "If you're, if you're having problems with this particular release schedule, call us"?
Call and leave word on our voicemail, is what it amounted to.
And it was only if you had problems.
Right.
Yeah.
And even then, they got 63 responses. A 64th was an anonymous response that they didn't count in the tally. Now, 60 percent of those wanted a different day of the week, or wanted the calendar handled differently. But then you're playing the numbers games again. You could turn around and say, "Okay, like you asked me, Tony, where were the parents who were outraged?
Right.
Where are the parents who are supporting this?" At none of the meetings. I've heard one person in the last year who went to the meeting and said, "I think this is a great idea. Keep it up." So I would have to ask the same thing back. Where are all of your supporters? I don't buy Mr. Sween's argument that, "Well, if they don't talk, they must agree." I don't buy that. I think people are just disgusted.
Well, I wanna touch on that for a minute, because, you know, we have had, you know, this discussion about early release for at least a year now, possibly longer than that. And last year, maybe even a little bit longer than that, there was a petition brought forward, and it had, you know, 550, 600 signatures on it. And the board just sort of summarily dismissed it, you know, by saying, "Well..." In fact, Mrs. Weinsheim, when she was here just moments ago, said that it would've had, those names would've had more weight with her had the people been there at the meeting. Or she probably would've even accepted if they had called her on the phone. But she felt that it carried less weight because it was just names on a petition. Now, how do you both feel about that? I mean, if there was an issue and a petition was brought forward...
Here's a great example of lack of leadership on the board. Here's a survey or a petition that comes in with 500 signatures, appealing for some consideration for a subject. The petition that was submitted to rename the gym floor at West High School was many names less than that, and got immediate attention. And without trying to offend anybody who was a former basketball coach, and I'm sure he was a great guy, but to spend time talking about renaming a gym floor based on a petition with 50 or 60 or 70 names, when you get a petition about the calendar with 500 names and dismissing that one? That just doesn't seem right to me. That sounds like there's a bias or a lack of understanding.
Right, right.
Michelle, what about you?
Well, you know, the reality is, it took over 200 signatures to get on the ballot, and those counted. A petition is meant to be not, well, you sign the petition and you go to the meeting. It's, "I don't have time. I'm gonna sign the petition. This petition is representing my voice."
Right.
Those are 500 voices that were basically told, "I'm sorry, we don't care." And at the open forum meeting, with the exception of Mrs. Weinsheim, who said she was on the fence, which I'm assuming is because she's running for office and doesn't wanna offend anyone, Mr. Becker, Mr. Scheiner said, "We don't think this is a good idea. We need to reconsider it." The other board members, Mr. McDermott, unless I'm given this extraordinary amount of information, I'm predisposed to Wednesdays. Mrs. Bowen, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Sween, predisposed to Wednesdays. Now, how is Mr. McDermott and Mr. Kavanaugh, who are on the committee that presents it to the board, they're predisposed to Wednesdays? They're predisposed to this time not being in our calendar for our kids? How are they going to unbiasedly take other options to the school board when they have no stake in it? They like what they have. Why would they put equal effort into an alternative?
Let's play devil's advocate for just a second, then. Okay, so how do you, as board members, say you're elected, how would you ensure that you are actually making decisions based on what truly is best for the majority of the people, and not just sort of acquiescing to a group that seems to be very loud? You know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease syndrome.
Well, I think there's a couple of ways. One is to search out people, and don't wait for them to come to you. Search out people and say, "What do you think, Tony? What do you think, Cheryl, about this situation? What's your family's situation?" And to be a little bit more aggressive about going out and finding people who are willing to talk, and that you trust to talk openly and honestly to you.
Yeah. Well, I wanna raise a different issue. This school board has done nothing on the boundary issue. Lot of hot air for many years. Something's got, you both agree, something has to be done.
Absolutely.
All right. What has to be done on boundaries?
Well, the first thing that I'm, I would like to see done, if I was on the board, is ask for an evaluation of each physical plant. I want to know what it costs to operate that facility. We've got 27 schools in the district. I wanna know what the costs are, the costs are per student, what the problems are, what the roof situation is. We're repairing roofs at the same time that we're conducting a survey of the facilities, and I don't know this, but it's possible we could be closing some facilities. And we may be repairing the very roofs that are gonna go out of business in two or three years, under a different program. Again, lack of leadership, lack of foresight. So I would like to do that very first thing. Then, I'm all in favor of the current program that we're in with the facilitator going out, drawing in focus groups, getting some clear understanding of where the people are, and and try to take that and move it to a decision. And again, that's leadership. You have to make the decision.
Are you willing to upset parents for this?
Yes.
Because the feeling I've had with this board is that they're afraid of inviting any kind of conflict. Michelle, what's your view on boundary?
I agree with Lee for the most part. Although I'm not waiting until I get elected, I've already sought out information from a couple contacts at the Chamber of Commerce. I have the enrollment projection book from the district office. I'm looking into all of those numbers. And I'm also talking to parents. I do know parents that live on the borders between one school or another and asking them, "Would it be possible to just switch sides next year? Would you have a problem with your child going to this school instead of this school?" Just as a way to get the ball rolling while we're waiting for the numbers on what it's going to cost to repair a building, what it's going to cost to maintain that building, how many kids go to that school? Can we shift it without affecting the students? It's the students' education that we need to be concerned about.
Let me ask you a question, Michelle. Suppose there's a boundary plan that comes up in your first term that you really like, but a couple of parents come forward with 600 names on a petition saying, "We don't want this boundary plan that you support." Would you then not support it at that point?
I would not support a vote at that point because then I think something needs... Some open communication needs to be done first. I would be saying, "Okay, we've got these 600 signatures. Are there more? Are there less?" I think now is the time to have the open forum meeting, not a year from now, when people are sick of it.
Okay. Okay. Lee, suppose there is a massive citizen opposition developing to a boundary plan that you like. How do you handle that?
Well, the real question is, are we giving good education to the children? To me, it's not about, "Does Billy go to Smith School? Does he go to Emmeline Cook School?" It's all about every school having a great education opportunity for the student. And if the parent really had the commitment from the school district that their children would get a good education, no matter where, I think you'd get a lot less resistance.
Okay.
Okay. The district has always sort of made one of its top priorities the restructuring of grades K... Rather, 6 through 12 and its at-risk children. Do you, either of you or both, believe that that should still be one of the district's top priorities? And if so, are you willing to reallocate or redirect monies toward that effort?
I think it's a matter of directing efforts early on to catch children before they become at risk. And there's part of the issue that the administration, the educators, have to come up with a solution on how do you catch those students early on. I think reformatting the middle school, 6, 7, 8, is really critical. When you get to a high school and you have 19, 20, 21% freshman failure rate, something's clearly wrong. And what did this and prior boards do? They addressed the issue at the freshman year. Well, you got to address the issue at the freshman year, but you got to do it at 6, 7, and 8, too. It's got to feed into the high school program.
Michelle?
Right now, as the budget stands, I think to restructure 6 to 12 is just fiscally irresponsible. We don't have that kind of money. We're still waiting to find out if collaboration works, and now we're going to pile on a new plan. I agree with the restructuring from the grade 6 to 8. It is a middle school concept that they're changing, too. That's what schools across the country have done for more than 30 years. It's a good concept. It's an effective concept. It was designed for 11 to 14-year-olds. It was not designed, nor has it been used, in the high schools. I think it's a great plan for the middle schools. And I agree with Mr. Wilson that this is a good idea to catch them before they become freshmen because the freshman failure rate did not start freshman year. It started in grade school. It progressed in middle school. And now we're trying to reactively address the problem after the fact.
So the $1.1 million figure that's been thrown out...
That's actually for the block scheduling the year after restructuring.
All right, but let's talk about that for a second. That would be fiscally irresponsible? That $1.1 million?
The block scheduling plan?
The block scheduling plan.
I think we've started the calendar. Mrs. Bowen and Mr. Sweene, or Mr. Kavanaugh, both say we have to keep it for three to four years. We're in year two now. In year three, we're adding restructuring to the tune of over $1 million.
All right.
In year four, we're going to add block scheduling in the high schools for another $1.1 million. If something goes wrong in those next couple of years, how are we going to know what did it?
All right.
We need to take things one step at a time. I think the block scheduling can wait.
All right. So it sounds like you wouldn't... You want to know that it's the right time to do things.
Yes. If we're going to do a plan, we should know that it's working before we do another plan that's going to disrupt the students.
Suppose you believe it's the right time to do something, but it's a pricey item. Do you ever support going to referendum for these types of things?
It really depends on the plan and the amount. First of all, I have to ask, when we have a plan presented to the board, why are there not backup plans? Why aren't there phased plans? I agree with block scheduling. I've seen it in other high schools, and I've seen that it works. The plan that was presented is not one I'm familiar with. I have no clue if it works. It's not the design that I know anything about. But I don't think it has to be done right this second, either.
All right, what about you? Block scheduling?
Well, block scheduling is something that I've seen used in the past, and it didn't work at one high school in particular that I know of. That doesn't mean it isn't going to work here. I think the real issue is for the administration to come back to the board with a number like $1.1 million as a cost to implement. And the headline in The Northwestern right here says, "The funding needs stun the school board." And I wasn't at that meeting. But I tell you, if the school board was stunned, something clearly is wrong.
What about this issue of going to referendum? Do you ever support going to referendum?
I would support referendum if the cause was really, really important and it really did vastly improve student performance. It's all about the students.
But referendum should be rare?
It should be very rare.
Okay, you agree with that also, obviously.
I don't think referendums should be a crutch, but I do believe that the public should have a say.
All right.
It's their money we're playing with.
Sure.
Okay. I've got a question here that a viewer had sent. The state sets limits on how much you can raise taxes. And granted, of course, no one likes to see their taxes go up. But we hear about not cutting programs, but not raising taxes either. Sooner or later, something has to give. So given the budget circumstances, do both of you or either of you believe that you should levy to the limit, or tax to the max, as some call it? Or do you levy only a certain percent or a set amount, like a set dollar amount? Or should it be frozen right where it is, and then you just live with that? And in that case, what are you going to cut?